Like twenty people and it was just a more question answer session.
Morning, Rain.
They're excited about next week. That'd be cool. We have a resolution for next week. It'll be great. Farm week next week. We all be here for that. Okay.
Squid your life pictures.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're small. They're just like a little headshot. What we did before, we had the whole coffee, the whole feature. He cut us out of it last year and just gives us a little little passport picture this year.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Tony's mad. You put my my picture with the flowers. He's a flower guy.
Yeah, we know. Yeah. Yeah, it was cold. Yeah.
Okay, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We stand for the Lord's Prayer, our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Before we start the meeting, I'd like to bring to your attention, there will be a special meeting here on our budget that will be to finalize our budget, held on Friday, March fourteenth at eleven a.m. in this room. Next public workshop will be held in this room on Tuesday, March eighteenth at ten thirty a.m. And the next regular meeting will be held on March nineteenth at ten thirty a.m. in this room. Madam Clerk, could you please call roll?
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Hernandez.
Here. Just real quickly, I'd like to welcome Rachel Delaney from the Attorney General's Office here today. Rachel, nice to have you present. I understand that you were with Commissioner Malloy yesterday at the farm.
We see her all over the place. Davios has been very active in our county and Rachel is a great representative of his office. And we welcome you here to your first Commissioners' meeting. Now, she heard about all the hype.
Did she?
She's been waiting a long time for this ticket, so we're gonna make sure we give her a little something today, a little.
Well, we got a good show for you.
We don't want her to come to Cedar Point on a rainy day. We want it to be a.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioners, we have a presentation by Beth Carmichael.
Okay, Beth Carmichael with Truly Trumble.
Good morning. How's everybody doing?
Morning.
Good. Your desks and along and around the room, you have our 2025 Visitors Guide. We launched that last week with our partners meeting. It is. And we're going to talk a little bit about our return on investment for the tax dollars we receive and how we are implementing those tax dollars. But with this particular publication, for every one dollar we spend to create Truly Trumble Trip Ideas, it returns six dollars in spending back to Trumbull County. It is typically sixty percent editorial content, forty percent advertisements. So we're able to really, as we call it, let the publication breathe with a lot of beautiful photography. Some people will say, well, and even with our front cover, like, that's not Trumbull County, but that is actually Mosquito Lake. It is at the beginning of Turkey Run Trail, which is over on the Portland side of the lake, on the east side of the lake. And that was literally at sunset. Very little photoshopping was done to make that work. We have new photography in there this year. We print forty thousand of these, and then we also have digital downloads as well. Distribution for our Visitors Guide or our Truly Trumble Trip Ideas is all along the Ohio Turnpike, Western Pennsylvania, attractions in Northeast Ohio, and then Ohio AAA offices. We also have requests for them that come into our office, and those were about two thousand requests that came in to ask for us to mail those to them. We invest heavily in this Visitors Guide to keep those prices for advertising low. For a full page ad, it's actually fifteen, about fifteen hundred dollars. So the other thing I wanted to highlight while I had your attention is about every three years, we do an advertising effectiveness study. The Visitors Guide is included just to ensure that we're taking watching tax dollars and making sure that we're making a financial impact to Trumbull County. So we have a methodology that we use. The company we use is out of Indiana, and they work with other destination marketing and destination management organizations. Overall, our advertising performance in 2023 and 2024, our campaign reached forty-six percent of targeted households in Cleveland, Columbus, Erie, and Pittsburgh. And that translates into one point three million Ad-Aware households in those destinations or in those areas. And then actually, we did our first win in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Our awareness based on the advertising we're doing is up fourteen percent, which means that we've added over four hundred thousand more Ad-Aware households since when we started this in twenty nineteen and twenty. Additionally, specifically, our ad influenced over seventy-six thousand leadership. Geez, seventy-six thousand leisure trips. And what I want to say is with this particular research, there is, let's say, a hundred percent of people are visiting. Several percentage of them are already planning on coming to Trumbull County. Maybe they're visiting friends and family. Maybe they're coming in for a meeting. So maybe they were already coming. What this is tracking is incremental trips based on our advertising. So these are people that didn't decide that they were coming to Trumbull County until they saw our advertising. So that influenced in twenty twenty-three and twenty-four, we influenced seventy-six thousand leisure trips of those that visitor that generated eighty million dollars in ad-influenced visitor spending. Overall, with all of our advertising investment, it is two hundred and eighty-six dollars in spending for every one dollar we spend to market Trumbull County. Oh, and that's up forty-eight percent from the previous studies. Prove, we've got a great stat. We have two of our staff, two of our staff, our other one is actually at OTLA, which is Ohio Travel Leadership Academy, and she is down in Columbus today. We have Nick Laner, and he's our full-time marketing manager. And then Kimmer, I call her our permanent part-time person. She takes care of us and makes sure that we're on the right trails at the right time, I would say. The other thing that we checked on is our competitive position. So Trumbull County is being rated highly for when people visit us, that we're authentic, we're friendly, we have a rich history, and we're a good road trip destination. Outperformed our competitors, which are Giaga, Mahoning, and Mercer Counties in areas such as local food variety, festivals, and entertainment. This year, we're launching a brand-new co-op marketing program. If you recall, when we changed our bylaws a few weeks ago, we eliminated our membership. Our membership dues were only fifty dollars, but we focus on all visitors-serving businesses now, not just members. And we have offered and we are offering a co-op marketing program. That could be social media campaigns. It could be articles, blogs. It can be stories. There's a lot of different opportunities for people to participate. Our goals is to amplify our partners' marketing reach and impact, leverage the collective power of Trumbull County's visitor-serving businesses, and then drive more visitors, obviously, and boost our local economy. The benefits of people that are participating is that they are having subsidized marketing costs. They have accesses to our marketing research, excuse us, resources, plus our marketing research. And then there's a targeted reach to connect with existing and potential visitors. They can sign up. We are messaging this out. You should be receiving emails from us that say, hey, you can sign up. We're trying to get as much information out there as possible before we open up the portal, which is going to be March twentieth at nine a.m. There's a Google form that people can fill out. It's timestamped, date stamped, and they can sign up because some of our opportunities are only once a month. So one is an email campaign, and we don't want to inundate. I know people have been getting a lot of emails from us lately. So we don't want to inundate people with a lot of emails. So that would be a once-a-month program. So first come, first served with that. If you go to trulytrumble.com/partnerresources, you can get more information on it. And then just to give you a little sneak peek at some of our advertising, the middle picture, Truly Trumble, Truly You. Where Will Today Take You? That was an advertisement that's currently running in our Ohio Magazine, March-April edition. That's a full-page article or a full-page ad. To the left, we just sent out last month an email on the thirty-six historic markers in Northeast Ohio. And this just gives you an idea of our reach. We sent out a total of over eighteen thousand emails. It reached on social media thirteen thousand people. We had an open rate, which is the amount of people that received the email and then opened it up at forty-six percent, and then a click-through rate of fifteen percent, which is very, very high. The other thing is because we've been investing over the years in professional, high-quality photography, and that's obviously demonstrated in our Visitors Guide, we've had the Ohio Turnpike reach out to us as well as ODOT. If you have seen the service center on ODOT, seventy-six, before you get to Meander, has just opened. If you walk in there, one side is Youngstown, but the other side is Trumbull County, and a lot of our photography is there, and it's beautiful. And you have to go and see it. They're like ten feet tall and long and all sorts of stuff. So stop at that Service Plaza. All that photography came from Trumbull Tourism. And then the Turnpike reached out to us a couple of months ago, and now they're utilizing, this one happens to be at Toe Path Service Plaza. So they're using one of our archery photos, the Amish Country, Green Eagle Winery, and then downtown, the Underground Railroad downtown at a historic marker. And then this is, I'm gonna play this. This is one of our videos. It started running last fall. We're promoting girlfriend getaways to Trumbull County. This doesn't have audio. We know that when we're doing digital marketing, we, people aren't listening. Everybody's got their phone silenced, and they're just watching the videos. So you'll see some, you'll see more verbiage, and I will show this to you. We're streaming this on YouTube. YouTube, we're doing streaming Hulu and some other places as well in our targeted markets. And we're working on a video right now that's going to be streaming in different, in Cleveland and Pittsburgh, right, Cleveland and Pittsburgh. It's a forty-five second, but that's gonna have voiceover. So we're taking a lot of our video assets and then editing it and trying to get the message out there as much as we can.
No, I don't have a question, but I gotta tell you, you have a winning, just a gold-class staff. What you're doing is phenomenal for Trumbull County. I think that it would be probably more world-class what you would expect in these larger metro, you know, these larger communities. I mean, but we have this staff here. I want to give you a hand, just applause, because it's well-deserved, first of all. And Beth, you do a great job with your staff, and we appreciate you. We thank you for promoting Trumbull. This is what the Commissioners are here to do too, but you make it easy with what you, you know, and your presentation was very, very good. Thank you.
I only have a couple of words. First of all, thank you. And second, outstanding. You do a fabulous job with you and your staff, and all of Trumbull County appreciates it.
We love, we do love our job. We love, we love Trumbull County. We love our job. We love promoting it. We get, we do get the fun part. So, and we appreciate that we get the fun part.
And we can tell you enjoy it. I mean, I've heard you speak at various groups, and, you know, you're a great cheerleader for Trumbull County. Thank you.
We don't want to lose you. I'm sure there's others looking, Beth. Keep us in your heart. Any other questions, Commissioners?
Thank you.
If anybody, audience may have a question. If not, we're gonna move forward with our agenda items. Thank you, Beth.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated March fourth, twenty twenty-five, and the regular meeting dated March fifth, twenty twenty-five, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Oh, second.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number three is to approve the transfer of the twenty twenty-five estimated sales tax revenues to the General Fund and General Bond Retirement Fund. The transfers of sales tax to the General Fund will be done on a monthly basis, and the transfer of sales tax to the General Bond Retirement Fund will be done in April for the June debt payments and October for the December debt payments.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number four is to receive and place on file the monthly activities report for the Trumbull County Dog Kennel for the months of January and February twenty twenty-five.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number five is to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign the proposed Amendment Number Two to the Ohio Department of Youth Service Subsidy Grant fiscal year twenty twenty-five. The amendment is necessary for the purpose of the realignment of funds to reflect to the updated salary schedule for employees on the grant who provide direct service programming to youth.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number six is to concur, concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to close the following roadways as listed. Hoagland Blackstove Road, County Highway two oh three in Bezetta Township between State Route three oh five and Prince Drive for emergency culvert replacement, and Barclay Messerly Road, County Highway one twenty-three between Nelson Mosher, County Highway one twenty-two, and Eagle Creek Road in Southington Township for tree removal. Both closing dates are Wednesday, March twelfth, twenty twenty-five, seven a.m. to five p.m.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number seven is to approve the sick and vacation leave conversion plan for the non-bargaining personnel in the Trumbull County Engineers' Office for the term effective January first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. The vacation cash-in will be limited to eighty hours maximum this year for this plan. The sick leave vacation will be limited to forty hours maximum this year for this plan.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number eight is to accept the resignation of probationary dispatcher Dennis Lovelace effective Sunday, March second, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Lovelace was offered a position with a different employer with more preferable hours intended his resignation. Trumbull County nine-one-one is still accepting applications and will fill the vacancy as soon as possible.
Motion approved.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, and with regrets. We wish him the best on his new endeavor.
Item number nine is to authorize the advertisement of a public notice in a newspaper of general circulation published in the Tribune Chronicle on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, announcing the timeframe for and location of the request for price proposal packages for the Emanuel Community Care Center Masonry and Window Project funded through Project Year Twenty-Three Community Development Lock Grant Community Development Program.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number ten is to establish the creation of the Stillwagon Road Waterline Project number one dash W dash nineteen, known as Fund four fifty-two for use by the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers' Department. Funds will be used to extend water infrastructure in the unincorporated service area in the City of Niles Public Water System. Initial funding will be provided by a five-thousand-dollar transfer from the Water Sewer Capital Project Reserve Fund four seven seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number eleven is to establish the creation of the Maplewood Park Sanitary Sewer Project number thirty-two dash S dash zero five, known as Fund four fifty-one for use by the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers' Department. Funds are to be used to build a wastewater collection system. Initial funding will be provided by a five-thousand-dollar transfer from the Water Sewer Capital Project Reserve Fund four seven seven.
Motion approved.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number twelve is to authorize payment of fifty-one thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars, ninety-nine cents to the East Kate Council Regional, Regional Council of Governments dues for the calendar year twenty twenty-five. Local dues are required to match federal and state funds at various ratios for the East Kate Regional Council of Governments, different funding programs.
Motion approved.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes. Yes.
Item thirteen is to authorize an amendment to Agenda Item passed December seventh, twenty twenty-two, American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, Trumbull County, Ohio, for the agreement with Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership in the amount of one million dollars for the purposes of funding the Emergency Home Repair Project. The amendment extends the agreement period through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item fourteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing Richard Hernandez, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to apply for, accept, and enter into an Ohio Water Supply revolving loan account, loan agreement on behalf of the County of Trumbull for planning, design, and/or construction of the Blueprint Phase Two Water Improvements Project number two dash W dash nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing Richard Hernandez, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to apply for, accept, and enter into an Ohio Water Supply revolving loan account, loan agreement on behalf of the County of Trumbull for planning, design, and/or construction of the Stillwagon Road Water Improvements Project number one dash W dash nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number sixteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing Richard Hernandez, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to apply for, accept, and enter into an Ohio Water Supply revolving loan account, loan agreement on behalf of the County of Trumbull for planning, design, and/or construction of the Champion Bezetta Water Booster Station, project number one dash W dash twenty-two.
Motion approved.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number seventeen is to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign a letter to Ohio Department of Transportation to recertify Trumbull County Transit, a public body, as the main transportation service for seniors and the disabled in Trumbull County.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number eighteen is to approve the mechanical certifications that coincide with the Request for Proposals twenty twenty-four dash zero one for purchase transportation, which stated that a vendor can run vehicles that are ten years or older during the contract period if the vehicles have been certified by a mechanic and approved by the Board of County Commissioners.
Motion.
The contract term is for March first, twenty twenty-five through February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-eight, with a possible one-year extension. And Commissioners, I added a note. Garwin, who is also an awarded vendor, has four vehicles that are or will be ten years or older and will be approved at a future meeting when all four certifications have been received by the county.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that, no.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes. Well, that was too short, really, compared to some. But I first like to make a comment concerning, before we go into public comments, we have been working diligently for meeting upon meeting on our budget. And we have recently, the Commissioners have recently taken what I would call some hard-nosed positions by some department heads when our budget was never really finalized. We will be meeting again on Friday concerning the budget to finalize it. And we will be delegating some additional monies that the prosecutor had came and, you know, gave us a little bit of information on where our carryover is. But we want you to understand that that carryover is necessary for future use in appropriating monies to these departments. So there is only a certain amount of money, a percentage of money that we can delegate to certain departments. So, you know, we, we still are not one hundred percent sure about where we will end up and be as far as, I don't want to, you know, sugarcoat anything and let anybody believe that, you know, we have money available and that we're gonna be able to spend all this money. You do need to save that money, those monies. In any good business, you would know you need to save those monies for, for the, you know, the rainy day. So I don't know, Commissioners, if you would like to expound on that, but I wanted to make that clear because we will be going into Friday, we will be going to negotiating, re-appropriating, not re-appropriating, but delegating the monies that we may have available. We don't know that percentage yet. We, the Commissioners are discussing with like-sized communities and CCAO to get some idea about where other communities might be in delegating their carryover monies. Commissioners, anything to add to that?
Well said. It's still a work in progress, and we'll meet Friday, and this is gonna be a continued work each and every day, each and every week, each and every month throughout the year. This is something now that we, we've been educated on a lot of stuff here. I know both of you gentlemen are new to the process with this, but I think we all got the same training, research. You know, this is something that's, it's great. It happened at the very beginning of the term because I think over the next four years of your career and the rest of my career, we understand things a little bit better, and we'll never let the county get in a situation like it is now. I think there's years and years of, as Commissioner Bernard said before, kicking the can, moving this, paint Robin Peter to pay Paul. And I think we're gonna get the county set on a strong foundation moving forward that we will be fingers-on with the budget from here on in and never have to be in this position again where we have to make such difficult decisions.
Commissioner? My only comment is that we asked the department heads and public officials to remember that as Commissioners, we have to look at the whole county. We realize that each and every one of you, your department, your office is very important. But when you only have so much to go around, we have to look at the county as a whole, and that's what we're trying to do. And collectively, you know, we all agree on that. We understand your needs, but we hope that you understand we only have so much money to go around, and we're. We understand your needs, but we hope that you understand we only have so much money to go around and we're doing the best we can. While you may not always agree with us, we, we hope that you do help us and, and support our decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, so we're, oh, you have something?
Couple of things, a couple of things, if I could. I guess I'll do the good stuff first. Rural King is hiring right now on the west side of Warren. If you've never been to a Rural King store before, I think you'll be quite impressed. I'm giddy about this, almost as giddy as I was with Bass Pro Shop. They got a great sporting goods department, great firearm section, tools, farm equipment. It's kind of like, you know, Menards and Bass Pro Shop had a baby together and created a Rural King. So it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a cool store. And I think it's gonna revitalize that whole neighborhood on the west side of Warren. And the plaza there, in Parkman Road Plaza, I think a year from now will be totally different. And you don't like my
Only, only Jesus had better parables than you.
That's, that's a big stretch.
I love Jesus.
Big stretch. Apart from that, but I, I think people are gonna be really excited when, when Rural King opens up and it's gonna drive people to that neighborhood. And that's gonna be a foundation anchor store to help rebuild that whole plaza and hopefully increase the property values, increase an area that's been kind of desolate over the last couple of years since the loss of Kmart. So I'm excited about that and I hope the residents will be too. Secondly, it's my favorite time of the year in Trumbull County because you can go up to Mosquito Lake if you're looking for something to do this weekend, drive up to the Route eighty eight Causeway, and you will see ducks on, on top of ducks on top of ducks. The northern migration is here. And in fall, the ducks all head south, but they trickle down, starting in September, all the way to December, a little at a time. When it's time to go north, they all go together and you'll see thousands of ducks on Mosquito Lake. And from the Causeway with a pair of binoculars, you can literally see twelve to fifteen different species of ducks. Things, there's ducks there right now called a long-tailed duck that I've never heard of ever being seen in Trumbull County before. They live in the very northernmost part of the Arctic. And there's a big flock that were there over the past couple of days. And some photographers, and I'll throw a name out, Nick Karoski. If you want to look him up on Facebook, he's the most fantastic photographer you have ever seen in your life. The way he captures what we have on Mosquito Lake, it's like looking at National Geographic magazine. But I would encourage that Nick doesn't get enough love in this county for the talents that he has. A lot of the pictures we have around the county buildings and that Beth has came from him. And he just has a way of capturing the most unique stuff we have out there. You can do it yourself with a camera and a kid. Get out there and look at what we have to offer. There's also more than forty bald eagle nests in the county right now. They're all active, they've laid their eggs already, the parents are out hunting for food. So you, on any given day, you might see ten or twelve eagles on Mosquito Lake if you sit long enough, which is really cool to have your kid or family there and watch a bald eagle glide over your head on, you know, it's, it's amazing. So that's free entertainment, so, so that's something you can do for free. Go grab a bucket of chicken somewhere and sit on the Causeway and have a picnic on the tailgate and look at the ducks.
And talk to Denny.
Next up, more positive stuff. Jeff Crystal, who is a local restaurateur in our county over in Liberty, he has his Lobster Fest this weekend. To me, it's one of the greatest meals of the year, Friday and Saturday. It's a Knoll Run Golf Course just across the border in Coatesville, but there'll be thousands of people there. He's right now in Maine picking up the lobsters and fresh seafood. He'll be driving back tomorrow and Friday, Saturday, it's one of my favorite times of the year. Also, this time of year, this is the time to go to the church, the church fish fries. And we're in Lent, and I don't think anybody does it better in the country than our community, Mahoning Valley, when it comes to getting fish on Fridays, whether it be the local church or there's different sportsmen's clubs or different civic organizations that hold fish fries on Friday. You know, Don't Cook Friday, go and support the local community. Most of those are charitable events, they're gonna help out something philanthropy-wise. And whether it be picking up homemade pierogies on a Thursday in, in Howland or, or going to Fish Fry, I encourage you to do that and, you know, plan that in your weekend with your family and your kids and get a taste of what the Mahoning Valley is all about. And then finally, it's walleye croppy season on Mosquito Lake. We're gonna have tens of thousands of people visiting our lake over the next couple of weeks to fish for walleye first and then croppy after that. And there's people out every night waiting right now, just as the ice melts. They're on the Causeway every night. And as you get into the end of March, beginning of April, you'll see plates from thirty different counties parked in the parking lots around our lake. So that's something that, welcome them, they're spending their dollars here. Businesses around the lake, you know, should be welcoming the sportsmen when they do that. That's on top of the hundred and fifty or so fishing tournaments they'll have on the lake this year with non-residents coming in. So it's a great time if you want to get outdoors, you got cabin fever, you've been tired of being cooped up all year long, get out and about and see what Trumbull County has to offer. That's what I have for that. Secondly, Insight Hospital, you had some bad news yesterday. And of course, everybody knows how hard we've fought as a community to replace the old Trumbull Memorial. Insights, the management, or the group that came in to take ownership, they've done a fantastic job so far, the service, the quality of service. They kind of jumped right into it, didn't miss a beat. Unfortunately, the Stewart, the old group that owned it, is still in bankruptcy, thanks. And they decided to sell some of their management rights, the computer software they have. This Insight was operating on the old records, the old billing and stuff with this, that Stewart had while they made the transition. Stewart went against bankruptcy court decision apparently and sold those rights to a third-party company that jacked the rates up. And basically, it's telling Insight, if you want the records, you want continued management, you gotta pay this now, which is way outside of their budget, outside of anybody's budget, almost, almost a ransom. So they're working through it the best they can. The new president, chief of staff of the hospital, Dr. Gons, is a, just a wonderful professional. And the doctors, the people that work there, have had some meetings recently. And they decided the best thing for the hospital now is to not keep billing people and not getting the money back from this other company or having to pay to get their records and money back. But it, finally implement Insight's program in its entirety by themselves now without the, the smooth transition. They're not, they don't want to pay the exorbitant fees. So they're gonna scale it on production for a little bit while they install their system, their billing, their computer records, and then rebuild the hospital back up after they go down the basics. The hospital is open, emergency room visits, you can still go there, a lot of their services are there. They're just not accepting long-term in, in hospital patients. They'll be referring to other sources for the time being. But they're not closing at this time, they're not. They don't want to scare the community, they're just reorganizing due to something unforeseen that anybody who took the hospital may have had to deal with this with Stewart. Stewart was a bad guy, bad manager. The, the manager, the ownership group there for that company ran that company in the ground nationwide and we're still feeling the rippling effects even, even after the bankruptcy. So we wish them the best. Want the community not to panic with that and, and realize that they're working through the process and, you know, hope and pray that they, that they make the transition again for the benefit of all those great employees they have there that hung on the first time. Now they got a few more bumps in the road that they're gonna have to deal with. And hopefully, they may get through this next patch on solid founding ground, similar to what we're doing, on solid grounds. So that's my ten-minute speech.
Thank you, Commissioner. And if you've never had walleye, of course, it's delicious, fresh catch walleye. The Commissioners definitely do support Insight one hundred percent. And we will be reaching out to sources, including some of our government officials. We may, maybe Ms. Delaney, you can help us a little bit with that. We can, you know, talk to the governor, we can converse with our state reps and make sure that, you know, it's very vital that hospitals are present in our area here. And like Commissioner Malloy had said, we don't want to breed any panic. We have had an email from Mercy, the CEO of Mercy Health, has said that they will be capable of taking on some of the patients that, you know, that Insight currently won't be able to handle at this point in time. But, so if, if there is anybody with an emergency or they in need of a hospital, Mercy, St. Joe's, and those hospitals are available to take on capacity. I did receive a, a letter or a request from a, an employee there, a long-term employee who was very concerned. I'm sure you have too, Commissioner, we, we all have. And it's our duty to make sure that these hospitals continue to, continue to function here in our community because it is part of an economic driver and we are going to be seeing a very major explosion of economic factors coming our area soon. So, but don't panic, if, if there is an emergency, Mercy Health is able to take capacity at this
And Insight is too, they're still taking emergencies, they're open.
Emergencies, right, that's right. I think, wasn't it inpatient or they were not?
The Elm Road Clinic is still open and the, and the hospital is still open, Hillside they're still working with, so.
Okay, so we're gonna move on. We're gonna go to public comment. If you have a comment, if you'd like to come to the podium, please give us your name. And more than welcome to do that at this time. No public comments?
Gary, how about just an update to the public on, we've had a transition in engineers, some of the projects you're working on, some of the things you're excited about in the engineer's office. Can you give us, just off the top of your head, what, what you guys are working on? Not to put you on the spot, but I know you're excited about some of them.
Yeah, Gary Schaefer, Trumbull County Engineers Office. And Danny, I don't get too excited, I don't get up, I don't get down. But some of the things we got coming up here soon, a couple of major bridge projects that we, we are excited about. One is over the Meander Reservoir, eleven hundred-foot bridge. It's gonna be full rehabilitation of that historic bridge. It's gonna be upwards of four million dollar project that'll be starting up this summer. You said bald eagles, you go out there, anytime you see loons in the water, you see bald eagles. So my guys are fighting over who's gonna inspect that project. Another one we got coming up, this summer's gonna be a rehabilitation of the South Main Avenue Bridge, the south of downtown Warren. And that project will be over. We're still managing the hearing and right away phase of the West Market Street Bridge there by the Huntington Bank, which will be coming up this time next year for construction. So three major bridge projects within a one, one and a half year span. It's a lot of work for us in addition to the paving programs. I'll be coming to you guys within a week or two for a contract award on County Line West Webb Project, which is a coordinated project between our office, Townships of Weathersfield and Austintown Township in Mahoning County. And then we got our big, big package, big, big package will be coming up here in April, which will have about sixteen communities upwards of ten, twelve million dollars with the resurfacing for the year.
What do you, what, what do you need the weather to do before you start road projects?
It needs to stay just like this. Yeah, I mean, we, we need a lot of good weather. But asphalt plants don't typically open up till April fifteenth, so we're right on schedule to hit some early projects and then throughout the summer and then the fall, continue to
I have a question, there's some concern that the engineer's office will not continue doing the engineer work for the township. Is, is that true or not true or?
Like I said, it's
What about the drawings and architect work and stuff like that?
You know, any of the townships that want to apply for OPWC grant money or they want to, you know, they have their own local funding, we are continuing to do the drawings for them. And we're doing the bid packages for them and we're overseeing the construction for the
Good, good, okay.
Fantastic.
Something, yeah, our, our staff is continuing to do.
Good.
Great, great job, Gary. Thank you.
I see your windows are going in too, huh?
Okay, thank you, Gary. Commissioners, we do have a meeting tonight in Vienna on a sanitary sewer project. That's at seven o'clock, correct, Gary? Okay. And again, we do have a meeting here on Friday for our final budget, which will be held at eleven AM. So
We hope, yes. Rachel, would you like to say anything on behalf of the Attorney General on what some of the projects he's working on statewide or some of his initiatives in the valley? I come on up to the microphone, so.
Hi, Rachel Delaney, I'm the Regional Director for the Ohio Attorney General.
Rachel, you could pull that up a little bit so you don't have to, there you go.
Perfect, thank you. I'll mention probably one of the biggest projects for the Ohio Attorney General right now. He, one of his big projects is fighting human trafficking statewide. And actually, last month, we just launched an app for ending human trafficking in the state of Ohio. So you can download the app to your phone, it's called End O H H T. So that's End Ohio, so O H H T for human trafficking, End O H H T. And this app is to report any tip for human trafficking that you see. So you can download the app to your phone and report any, any signs of human trafficking that you see. Also, we have a hotline that you can call for human trafficking in the state of Ohio. So before last month, there was just a national hotline that you could call. But with Dave Yost, we now have one that is unique to the state of Ohio. That hotline is eight four four End O H H T. So eight four four End O H H T. And that is
That's the big initiative for them?
Yes, ending human trafficking in the state of Ohio. Yeah.
Thank you, Rachel.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I see Mr. Danzo's here and I just would like to thank him and Prosecutor's Office for helping us out with the mail situation that we had, the backlog. We're processing it through their office. And would you tell Mr. Watkins, we really appreciate it and we appreciate, you know, your efforts yesterday of correcting that problem for us? Yep.
And Mike Salamone, what time is your public meeting on transportation?
Mike Salamone, Mike Salamone, Trumbull County Transit Administrator. Yes, I will be having a public meeting at two o'clock today at the Warren Scope Center to go over just general information about transportation. One of the topics that we will be talking about, I'll bring up police, is what I brought up yesterday, is the WRTA two routes, seventy-three, seventy-four, will no longer be running as of May thirtieth. However, the Warren Express will still keep running past that time. So anybody that possibly needs the right thing, wanna call me if we can assist with Trumbull County Transit, I'll do my best. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Gary.
Gary Newbrow, Sanitary Engineer. Commissioners, just that public hearing tonight, it is not at Tomassius High School. That's where we normally have the ones in Vienna, just a reminder to you. It's gonna be at Tomassius Elementary School, and that is on Sheridan Drive where we're building the sewer. So is every, are you familiar where Sheridan is? Well, if you go, if you go out eighty-two and you, and you're coming from the west and you take the ramp off of at one ninety-three, head south for maybe a quarter mile and you'll see a sign there for Sheridan Drive on the right. It's a little bit south of Squaw Creek on the other side of the road, but turn right up that hill and that's how you get there.
Okay.
Behind Animal Welfare League on that side.
What's that?
Behind Animal Welfare League.
It's not that far down.
But on the same side.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, I believe we need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.